Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February sixteenth Salisbury City Council Work Session. Following this meeting today, we were going to have a special meeting, so if you'd like to stay with us, you're more than welcome. First up on the agenda today is ordinance, accepting a grant to purchase pediatric educational equipment, and Fire Chief John Toll will walk us through that. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. What you have in front of you is a ordinance requesting the approval of a budget amendment and the grant fund for the perfect of accepting funds from the Maryland Institute of Emergency Medical Services or MEMS in the amount of $1,200. This funds will enable us to purchase some pediatric resuscitation equipment and mannequins to can have continued education for clinicians.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Hey, so what's the main purpose of this? You said for pediatric education. Is this for when we go into the schools and talk to children or?
Yes, it is. It's part of that, but it's also for our yearly recertification that we have to do for all of our paramedics and our EMTs. This equipment provides real-time feedback for when we're doing CPR and any type of skills pediatric. It's the technology that's in it allows us to see compression ratio on Bluetooth and all of that. So it's just an enhancement of our training mannequins and simulations that we can do. Or we can also, okay, the school system, if we're doing any type of education with children or our hands-only CPR that we do for the community and all that stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep. No further questions or comments, and I support moving it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments, move forward.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No questions or comments, move it forward.
And Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments, and moving forward, please.
Thank you. Chief, thank you very much again for searching out these grants. It's good. It's really good, and keep up the good work. I know that Jimmy helped you, Deputy Chief Gladwell, and we thank him as well. Mrs. Nichols, we can move that forward, put that on the agenda, please. Next up, we have a discussion and a presentation on rooming house slash rental life safety task force. And at this time, I'm going to introduce Ron Strickler, who will take us through the presentation. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Councilman Heath. I could pull up the presentation. You all should have had a copy of it in your packet, but we'll go through it here. One second. Somebody sharing the screen right now? Let me see here.
No, you should be able to.
Yeah, there we go. All right. Okay, so in response to the fire on January ninth, 119 First Street, there was a rooming house, City of Salisbury, in response to some questions we received on the January eleventh council meeting, came together just to do a brief history of our registration process, our licensing process, and process specific to that house, and how we can look at solving some of these problems moving forward. Task force consisted of myself, Dan Hoag, our co-compines manager, a few members of DID, Amanda, I think Bill Holland's on here. I believe Henry Ure was a part of it, and then from the fire department, Eric Kramer was part of the initial conversation, and I believe Assistant Chief was also on it, Gladwell, I believe. So we'll get started. So we just want to kind of talk about the historical data of what's taken place in the city over the years. Back in the early 2000s, when I was first able to just kind of determine some data based on when we started doing our inspections of rental properties, and there was this tremendous growth around the year 2000. And for about three years, Bill Holland had been working with council. Some of those meetings were extremely long, but 2004 was finally cleared, passed through council, and they began what was at the time random inspections. Their goal at the time was to do thirty inspections per month, and in the first six months, they completed that task and did one hundred and eighty inspections. Some of the responses, or some of the response in the media at the time was that there weren't enough people to do the inspections so that they could get all 6,500 rental properties at the time completed. That process went for over two-year period for approximately seven hundred and twenty inspections. And then in 2006, I believe, the department was split, and I'm not exactly sure. I think it was Tom Stevenson who had taken over the HCD department at the time. So that continued for a while until the department split, and then was picked up again in 2008. From 2008, 2010, there was no data available. We didn't have a tracking system, and we weren't able to locate any of that information. But from 2010 to current, we attempted 3,000 random inspections. Fifteen hundred and seventy-five were completed, 1,390 were refused, or no response given by either the tenant or the property owner. We'll go into that a little bit further later. And 2,295 new unit inspections were completed since 2010. So just a quick note, when a change of property occurs at a rental property, they have to re, we have to re-inspect that property anytime ownership changes hands, and a new license must be given. So with the rental registration inspection process, for those of you not familiar, the property owner submits applications to HCCD. They have to receive a license and then also a license for each rental unit. So in the case of a rent, a rooming house, if it's eight properties, then they would have to get eight separate rental unit licenses. It's processed by HCD staff, and if it's before nineteen seventy-eight, requires a lead certificate, which is issued by the state, and inspection is scheduled to be completed by code enforcement officer. Obviously, we've had a little bit of change to that process currently because of COVID. We see the high peaks. We had, they had shut down for a while. I think we started back up mid-July, and then when it went back up again, we had halted that for the last two months, but that will resume on March first. And we're looking for standard deliverability and no code violations. So we do give property owners or property management companies the list of requirements prior to the inspection. Historically, we have not been following code and charging for a second inspection, but that's something we intend to make sure happens moving forward. And, you know, since I've been with the department, it's one of the things, if we have to come back for a second unit, our code says we can charge $100. They know what the expectations are prior to, and they should have that work completed. So the rental license units are granted after successful inspection, and at renewal, no inspection is required. We currently have just over 9,500 registered units in the city of Salisbury. To brief history on where we're at right now with rooming houses in Salisbury. So there's currently twenty-three rooming houses in operation with a total of 169 rooms. Management of those rooming houses is divided amongst, I believe, actually, I'm missing one on here, but I believe it was six owners of property management companies. So what you'll see is some property management companies or property companies have multiple different names backing their properties. So we had to compile that list and get it together. So seventeen of our rooming houses are owned by one company, but it does fall under a few different business names. Two properties are owned by one owner, and then you have four other properties that are owned just one singular ownership. Historical data on 119 First Street. A property was converted to a rooming house prior to zoning changes. Inspection and code violation history, so we're able to determine what's been done since 2010. In November of 2010, there was a complaint inspection at one of the units. Then again, on nine twenty-six eleven, there was another inspection for a complaint, and the last complaint inspection was six eight twelve. There also have been twelve exterior code violations, which would have gone right to the property owner. I do note on this property that there had been a new outside electrical panel put in in November of 2020, and our initial investigation by code enforcement, which determines egress and square footage requirements for each room, were met. The only, the only concern we had in relation to that was it appeared that maybe one of the rental properties had used a bed inside of a closet, which we don't know how you would control that, to use the bedroom space as an actual, like, living area versus putting the bed in that bedroom. So what are we facing right now? What are our issues? How do we deal with this moving forward? So the inspection barriers is, that's the issue. So in our code, it does state that we can do mandatory inspections at any time, but our code doesn't supersede law. So these random mandatory inspections can only be requested. The city's legal team has advised that we cannot force mandatory inspections if it did not, if, if denied without administrative search warrant. When we talk about administrative search warrants, the hard part as it relates to those is you have to be able to prove that there is an immediate life safety issue in order to get those administrative search warrants. And without being inside the property, it's hard to do. Random inspections can be done or can be denied by either the property owner or management company or the tenant. If denied, code enforcement, like I said, is required to get a search warrant, and can only be easily attained without clear evidence of life safety violations, which are hard to produce without inspections. So we brainstormed, and, and after speaking with the legal team for the city, we think this would be the best short-term solution. One of the concepts that we thought of was we have a rental agreement. What can we do as far as having a stipulation on there that you have to allow us to inspect your property if we want to do a random inspection? The only problem with that is if the tenant says no, we cannot come in, so it doesn't solve our issue. So what we'd like to do is reach out to these rooming houses, start with the twenty-three rooming houses we know we have, with an educational campaign targeting the tenants themselves. Make, you know, advising them what the minimum standards of livability are, what life safety and code violations look like if they may have them. And the big piece of this is requesting or gaining the trust of these tenants to allow us to do a life safety inspection between code enforcement officers and fire inspectors. Property owner or management company approval is not needed if the tenant allows you to enter the premises. The important piece here is if you have an eight-room rooming house, and we would get into three of those rooms that we were allowed to by the tenant. If we were able to prove or find multiple violations with code or life safety, then the opportunity for that administrative search warrant is clear, and we can show that information to the court to get that administrative search warrant for the remainder of the properties. You know, we, we always advise in code enforcement that if you have an issue with your property, your first line that you need to go to would be your property owner. But if they're having issues and things are not being addressed, that's going to be part of the educational campaign. And one of the key things in that is just making sure that there's no repercussions as a result of them allowing us to interview, to see these properties. You know, we have to support this process from the front and the back, and just make sure that, you know, if they let us in, we just have to keep an eye and make sure nothing negative is happening to those tenants as a result. And then our long-term solutions, if all the short-term solutions don't help solve the problem, would be to explore legislation, legislation requiring rooming houses to be sprinkled within a five-year period, three-to-five-year period, I think what we talked about. One of the, one of the concerns with that would be the cost for the property owner. So as a city, we would look at considering cost sharing with property owners to complete. So we might hook up to the water main to the actual property, and then they would take it from there. Second thing would be to explore additional legislation regarding square footage required for living space. Currently, that's set at seventy square feet for a single occupancy room. So if you have a room in a rooming house, as long as it's seventy square feet, if you think about that seven by ten, it is considered meeting standards. If you have two people in that room, it would be a hundred and twenty square feet for a double occupancy room. So you're looking at twelve by ten. I can't really get you to picture that right now, but, you know, trying to get a comparison with a seven by ten might be like a baseline in basketball that, you know, from the foul line, if that helps. And then explore additional legislation based on non-related occupants residing at properties. So one of the things that Eric Kramer spoke of was the current limit as far as it goes when there's different changes in what the fire code says. So one through six would be, you know, your residential, once you get over six, seven, I believe it was fourteen or fifteen, and then anything over fifteen is considered like a dormitory. So we could look at additional legislation from that standpoint. Our hope is that we can really get these tenants to, to trust us, to get in line and make sure their properties are safe. It's my personal belief that rooming houses are a cash cow for, for these property owners. I mean, there's, you know, there's money to be made, but if that money's being made, let's invest and make sure that we're, it's safe for the tenants. So that's all I have. If you have any questions. If I can't answer, I'm sure Amanda or Bill will chime in, or maybe Assistant Chief Gladwell, if he's still here.
Yep, he's here. Yeah, thank you, Ron. Let's open for questions now, Mr. Boda. Questions or comments?
A couple of questions on the, on the rooming houses. So when you're talking about the size, do these include, is it almost like a hotel room size for some of these, where it's like, there's like a, just one room? Is there a bathroom in there? Are there requirements for bathrooms?
So like in the definition, when you think of a rooming house, ultimately, you have a room. If it has a kitchen and it has a bathroom, then it's an apartment. So they share, they share kitchen space, and they also share bathrooms in a rooming house.
Okay, so this is not like some of the properties that were big old houses, and they've been cut up into four apartments. These are a house, basically, where people are renting bedrooms.
Yes, I mean, so is that, is it? That's correct. So if you think about 119 First Street, that property, I believe, was like eighteen hundred and ninety square feet, and they had seven rooms and an apartment in the rear of the property. But all those rooms met the, the square footage requirements. They met the egress requirements. So that's why, you know, when, I think we focus on this rooming house for now, but, you know, there are other properties that have multiple apartments in them that are somewhat split up like a rooming house, but because they have that bathroom or that kitchen space, it doesn't qualify. So I think we approach this for now, and then maybe take a look at some of those other properties in the city that have similar setups that are just outside the line of a rooming house.
Um, Mark, maybe, is Mark on still? Yeah, there he is. Mark, if, if a property owner gives the city the okay to conduct an inspection, but the tenant refuses, what's, if the tenant refuses, they're not allowed to go in unless they have an administrative warrant, correct?
Correct. They're really protecting the tenant's rights more than anything else with that search warrant. It's, they're the ones occupying the space. It's their private space.
Yeah, so it's just so, because a landlord can't just, you know, they're not supposed to just be able to go into someone's house either without permission, so.
Only if the lease provided for that would the landlord, I mean, the landlord could enforce it, but they'd have to do that in landlord tenant court.
It has to be in the, which, in the lease has to be enforced. Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Um, Ron, could you possibly tell me where the twenty-three rooming houses are located?
Well, you have multiple rooming houses located up on, and up on First, Second Street, up in the Hill area. You have a rooming houses located over on, over in the Church Street area. Hotel Esther would be a perfect example. I think they have sixteen rooms in that property. They are, you know, one of the, one of the key things that we're considering with this is when you look at a recovery house or a, you know, a rehabilitation home, you know, how many individuals in that property are sharing space and then also have their own bedroom space? So they're, they are kind of located, but I would say the majority are up on the hill or like right close down by the chicken plant. They have a lot of employees that work at the chicken plant that are living in some of those ones. I guess the division, where division connects with Second Street, there's a couple right down there. They're kind of spread out, but the majority would fall over in the Church Street area and up on the hill.
Okay, and you say the Hill, are you saying Hill Street?
Oh, are you up in like First, Second Street, up the California neighborhood? Up down by Fitzwater Street, up in that area.
Now, what would you consider an efficiency? Would you consider that an apartment or room?
Oh, if an efficiency has, if it has kitchen and bathroom space, and it would be considered a, a, an apartment or, yeah, an apartment versus a rooming house.
Okay, now, you said that an electrical panel was placed in 119 First Street in November of what year?
I believe, if, if I'm, please don't quote me. I believe it was November of 2020, and the inspection was completed on that electrical alley.
I was just listening to you, and I was looking at your PowerPoint. I have a problem with, actually, with some of the landlords. I do. I'm not going to sit here like I don't. With some of the properties that I've actually seen in my district. How I've had complaints about certain things that have, you know, happened in their apartments as far as electricity and heating and or, let me ask you. Are landlords supposed to provide heat in these apartments or in these rooms?
Yes, there, there's a, a minimum temperature requirement that, that the houses would have to be heated to.
And what's the temperature?
I believe it's sixty-five.
Woo, okay, now sixty-five. Okay, so suppose it's like thirty-two degrees outside. How do you get sixty-five? Especially if your heat is not up to par, or if you have a dwelling that's not properly insulated. You got a porous, you got a porous shell, it's not insulated, you got cracks in the ceiling, cracks in the floor. So how do you get sixty-five doing, like, just like now? This is what I'm, this is what I'm saying. I've had several people call me from my district in reference to electrical problems. Maybe two years ago, I had someone call me, their power went out, completely out. And I called the, the mayor, and I called Everett in reference to it. I got reamed up from the landlord for doing this, but this woman had two asthmatic children and a hundred-degree temperature. Now, mind you, what the person tells me is, well, what am I supposed to do if I can't get electrician out there? But what are you supposed to do?
April, if I could, if I could for a second, what they, what the tenant needs to do is call and have, ask for an inspection.
Well, they did, and it did happen. But I'm just, some of these landlords, I, I'm going to be honest with you, just put people in houses, just like you said, Ron, and in these rooming houses to collect money and don't care how they live. And that's my fear of just what happened on First Street. What happened again, and I understand we're trying to do something a little different than what we've done before, and I appreciate that because that, it needs to be done. We need to have a more visual look at some of these houses that these people are living in, because I know I've gone in some, and I wouldn't live in them. I wouldn't. I would not. I wouldn't, I probably would be homeless before I live in some of these conditions, and I'm not going to sit here and lie to you. And those people, from what I understand, had to have a heater, space heater, to help heat, heat the room or help heat the apartment because it was so drafty and so, so, you know, there's some things that I think sometimes that we overlook as far as the condition of the buildings, not so much as we look at electrical and some other things, but we, the condition of the building is, is my, my my concern. And they're like, don't think I'm bypassing anything, but the conditions of the buildings.
And that's one of the things that we've talked about as well, is, you know, we have these minimum standard, standards of livability. How can we expand that? And I think one of the key things about this, this educational and inspection process, we're going to try to move forward with, is that it's going to include both code enforcement and fire safety, because Eric and his team might be looking for different things than what we're looking for. And that's safety related, you know, when you talk about holes in the ceiling, we know we can't have that from a code enforcement side, but if there's a, you know, a burn-up ground plug, you know, that we don't normally catch, you know, that's something that Eric's looking at. So I think we take this multi-pronged approach with it. And, and actually, I think it would be a great benefit to have the support of the council in this, to share this information with your, with your constituencies. And, you know, we're not coming in to do anything negative towards the tenant. We want to improve life for them. And I do believe that there are rooming houses out there that are in good condition. I believe that that's true. But I think there's probably some that need a lot of work, and if we can go in there and secure that search warrant after searching two or three of them, I think that's our ticket to move forward and get, getting these back in compliance.
Yeah, I think that what has happened is we've probably have gotten a little winged, so a lot of these landlords have taken us for granted and refuse to do anything. And I think we, like you said, we need to step the, step the pace up and do some things a little different, because if we're not doing anything, they're not going to do anything either, and this is how I feel. So we need to put a foot in.
Yeah, we need to, we need our residents to know that they should feel safe calling our department. And we're always looking out, and like I said, we always say, you can call your property owner first. There's the biggest complaint we get is from a property owner per se is they never gave us an opportunity to fix this. Now, how often does it happen? I wouldn't say it's a lot, but it does happen that we get the call before they call. But I mean, in a situation like electricity, if you consider that, that is a necessity. Water is a necessity. That's the kind of thing that a landlord should be coming out and fixing right away. Things that you need heat in the wintertime, you know, I wouldn't say that air conditioning would be top on that list in the summer because it's not a necessity, but in certain situations, it is, like you were describing earlier.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you, April.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blake?
Well, I had a couple of comments. Um, I wondered, did, did the rooming house in question, the one with the fire, that, did it have a fire extinguisher in it in any of the rooms? Does anyone know? I know it sounded like they had the smoke detectors, but were there any fire extinguishers in any of the home? And is that a man, is that mandatory for any of these rooming houses to even have a fire extinguisher in the homes or in each room?
Mimi, can you handle that, or Chief?
Um, cannot confirm whether there was any working smoke or fire extinguishers in the home. We can just confirm that there was working smoke detectors.
Is, is there, is that part of the code, though, to have a fire extinguisher in a, in a rooming house?
I, I do not believe the code requires fire extinguishers in every room. It may require one in the kitchen or the common space area, but that would be it.
Mark, question for you. Can we, can we take some action in that area?
Yeah, I think, I think that we definitely can, if you, if you have life safety issues and you want to, they can be, if nothing else, they can be tied to the license itself, mandating that certain safety precautions be taken in order to reissue a license.
I think we should look at that.
Yeah, I think that if it's a rooming house, you know, if one's in the kitchen, that's fantastic. One may not be in the kitchen, but if, you know, if each person sleeps in a different space, I would consider a fire extinguisher in every room that a person is renting to be one of the, a bigger safety issue, and I would like to really strongly consider having the council really look at and move towards, one of Ron's major suggestions is phasing in these sprinkler systems in these homes over three to five years. I know that seems like a big, big deal, but it is a huge factor in, in saving lives. And I'm not saying I know what the answer is right now. I'm not, I'm just very much for that. And I just wanted to, to think about another thing outside of that is, what would it be like, or how would we look at phasing out these rooming houses in Salisbury? What, what would that look like? I, I know that's a tough thing, but how would we have these, like, the Hotel Esther? I, I just, my head spins when I think of that place in regards to safety. It may have passed every little minimum requirement, but that would be a huge, huge but that would be a huge, huge nightmare, um, on a multitude of levels.
If, if I could interrupt for a second, uh, I would ask that the council please, uh, try to avoid using particular properties, uh, and, and we talk in terms of generalities.
Well, generally speaking.
There you go.
The place on church, at any place on Church Street with that have, that would have seventeen rooms or more than five rooms in any given dwelling, I think becomes a real concern for safety, um. I, I know I had a concern that I called in recently, a property on Brown Street area. And, uh, the second floor, I think people might be living up there, but the door was nailed shut, and it just becomes really huge, um. And I think we're really doing good and being very, very proactive, and, um, but I think a fire extinguisher in every room, and I think really trying to consider moving towards a s- a sprinkler system. Um, and looking at phasing, uh, a dwelling out that would have more than, than five rooms or something, these big homes with these multiple rooms, it becomes a really big safety hazard, the more rooms and more, uh, people you have in it, then you have multiple people homeless, uh, it, it's like a trickle effect.
Why, Angela, can I say something? Some of these rooming houses are affordable. It's not that we don't need, and I understand what you're saying to the fullest extent, as far, but a lot of people cannot afford anything but a room. They can't afford anything but a room, but our issue right now is to keep them safe and as safe as we possibly can. Um, I don't have a problem with rooming houses, what I have a problem with is how they're maintained. That's my issue right now, how they're maintained, we've had rooming houses for years and years and years. As long as I can remember, there's always been rooming houses.
And there's always been concerns with them.
There, there had been concerns, but there's concerns with houses.
Yeah, but that, that, to me, that boils down to just the money-making, we're gonna shove these people in these rooms, and with no, with little accountability. Um, uh, just my main points are that come off the top of my head, I think the fire extinguisher in, in every room, um, phasing in, possibly really looking at the sprinkler situation in every room, and, and having a discussion about at least the capacity of a rooming house, if nothing else. I understand their function, I understand their need, I understand all of that, but I think seventeen, eighteen, twenty rooms in a house gets a bit, a bit dangerous.
Places that you're come talking about used to be a hotel.
Yes.
So it's set up still as such. Cause I've been in, in it myself, it's not a bad place, sometimes you have to consider who's living in it too. You know, I don't just blame everything on the landlords, I also put responsibility on the tenants just as well. But what, like I said, I understand your first few things, the fire extinguishers and the sprinklers, I agree with that wholeheartedly. But we can't just take rooming houses away, but we can narrow it down in sizes. But I, I, I could, I could consider that more so than just removing them, period, because people need places to stay, and they can't afford anything but a rooming, a room.
I, I can concur, I can concur, those, those were my three points.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Ron, it was very helpful.
Yeah, just the one thing I would say, one of the ways we limit the number of rooms inside of a house would be that second long-term solution, which will be changing that square footage occupancy requirement. If you make that bigger, you're obviously gonna have less rooms in the rooming houses themselves, giving them more space, more egress, that type of thing.
Thank you, Ron. Um, this, this, this is Gregory, you're up.
Um, so everybody covered some really good topics, I'm, I'm really interested in the education program that you're talking about. Um, now, I'm not sure if it's already, I haven't had to use it for this sort of thing, but like the citizen reporting tool we already have on the website. Is that something we could use for tenants to request inspections? Or, or file some sort of complaint, you know, is that something we could use in, in reaching some of these tenants to let them know that there, if there's a problem, they have a way of reporting it and, and reaching somebody, that doesn't mean having to make a phone call between nine and five. You know, if, if they've gotta work all day, they can't stop to make a phone call or something, something they can just quickly log in any hour, any day and, and file a, a report. Would that be something that, that folks could, we could use as part of that education campaign?
Yes, so any complaint that comes through the portal, uh, then is sorted at the, at the mayor's office and distributed to the property department. So if we receive a complaint about a property, uh, at that point, we don't need permission to go in and inspect that property, because the tenant is al- already asking us to do so. So we would encourage them to use that system, a part of the educational piece, to inform us if they have issues they're concerned about, so we can get in there.
So, a- as, a- a- as far as the education, like, what are you, for, uh, what are you thinking as far as how to reach tenants and, and make this, um, make this no- more widely known, because I think a lot of folks, you know, April's had people come to her, I've had people come to me, you know, they don't know where they, where to go, they, a- and, I mean, that, that's something that most, it's not you know, surprising, they just don't know where, where to go, so how are we going to reach these folks and, and give them the tools that they need to be able to take control of, of their living situation?
So we, we have multiple, um, multiple published pieces that include code violations, include minimum standards of livability. Uh, my, my goal with this project is we have twenty-three properties, so, you know, we are going to go to each property, knock on doors, distribute this information, let them know who we are, why we're there, what we're trying to do, and hopefully win the ability to take a look, you know, maybe not that day, I don't think that would be the expectation, but if they have the information in their hand, and they can look around their property and say, oh, I've got an issue here, I've got this here, you know, then ability to get in there, so I would wanna do this face-to-face.
Right, just a little, yeah, little fashion canvas.
That we usually do, we go around and give information about, um, it's just the general houses in that general area that we pop up at. Um, and that's what they really have us for, the constituents, to do just what we do, deliver the word. You know, we take it to our president, we take it to our mayor, we take it to our, um, acting mayor. Maybe lead, and sometimes I just give them the number, Rachel, H C D V, just let them call, I mean, those are the things that I do, you know, because sometimes I get overwhelmed with it. I have a lot of issues over in District One, and, uh, first, actually on the west side, I have a lot of, a, a lot of extra issues with housing, so, um, and just like, like I said, most of those houses are in my district.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think, you know, getting out there and door knocking, and I mean, that's, that's a way to, a fact, a really effective way to, to reach people, leave door hangers if nobody's on, that sort of thing, um. Any kind of, like, social media outreach, and that sort of thing would be helpful too, I think. So, cool, okay, that, that pretty much, you've answered a lot of questions, so, that was, that was the one I had left that hadn't hadn't been addressed.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, I've got just a couple of questions and comments, um, and I, I think I've said this several times before, the codes and the laws are not for the masses. The codes and the laws are for the bad actors. Uh, and, and, you know, that's not, that, that's been, it's been that way for years, and it'll continue to be that way. We have good landlords, we have bad landlords, and the one thing I want to, uh, ask, uh, from council, Mark, um, if someone, uh, retribution is a concern of mine. If a tenant calls, they should not be subject to retribution. Are the mechanisms, mechanisms that we could put in to prevent that, I know it's difficult, uh, but
No, I think, again, we could, we could add mechanisms to the licensing code that would, uh, you know, enable us to suspend or terminate a license if there was retribution. I think we'd have to look at some other samples to see just how we would go about determining whether there was retribution, but I, I think we could certainly get there. There, there, there are plenty of those laws already on the books with regard to discrimination, of, you know, terminating someone for filing a workman's compensation claim, uh, you know, we, we could certainly go there and do that.
Yeah, and I think we could also get some help from M M L, right, Mayor?
Absolutely, and I think one of the things educating a tenant if they're having an issue with a landlord who's not, you know, taking care of problems, is to provide them assistance or education of how to file, to put their rent in escrow through the court. So, you know, that way, you know, the money is being held, they're proving that they're paying their rent. Uh, and then once the issues are fixed and the court releases the funds to the landlord, so th- those are things that I think could, uh, you know, something like that, if we can provide some assistance and, and help a tenant to, you know, walk through something like that, uh. Um, the, the other thing, and I don't mean to take up Jack's time, but I was thinking as everybody was talking, you know, there, there, I, I think the, you know, the concern there, there was talk about, I, I think moving towards like the relationship issue, it's a very sticky issue. Uh, i- it's been an issue with the, the four-to-two thing, which, uh, even though it was targeting college students, it affected a lot of people who, to afford housing, to try to live with someone else who's a friend, uh, you know, where, where people co-live together. Uh, it's affected that, and I, I think, uh, that's what some of these, uh, you know, the, some of these people in these rooming houses would probably be in a situation in, in a, in a real home, if not, if not for that law. I think with the rooming houses, the best approach is to use the fire code occupancy. Uh, how many people can safely live here, how many vehicles can we have safely for ingress and egress in and off the property, off-street parking, limiting that. Uh, I think, uh, because we don't wanna crowd our streets up, because it's hard for the fire trucks and ambulance to get through when they need to, so I, I think we can target the, the overcrowding by reducing, you know, requiring strict occupancy limits on these, on these rooming houses, and I think that will, uh, I think that's the best approach uh, that I think we can have, wh- when addressing which is, is the major issue of too many people in there.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one, one other comment, um, and then, uh, sort of a direction for you, Ron, and your, and your team. Um, the comment is that, uh, and I'm speaking about the bad actors now, I'm not speaking about the general population. Um, fire extinct, fire, uh, suppression systems, sprinklers are the most effective, no doubt about it. But guess who's gonna pay for those? The tenants, in some way, shape or form. Everything that we do that costs money from the bad actors is gonna be passed along to the tenants. That goes back to what you were, you were pointing out, April, about we need these, because there, there, there's no place for a lot of people to go. So, we have to keep that in mind, and that complicates the thing, because, yeah, I mean, we could put uh, a law and says we have to have sprinklers in, in rooming houses. But two things are gonna happen, they're gonna be abandoned, and people are gonna be homeless, we're gonna put the rents up for those rooms that are gonna drive people out. It's not a, it's not a very simple thing, and again, I'm not saying this is everybody, because we know it's not. We know that, that some things are not passed on, but by some people, but there are those people. Uh, and, and I don't, you know, know, I think, Ron, the, the best thing you did was put in twenty-three, uh, seventeen owners. One, you know, seventeen ha- uh, to one owner, et cetera, that's the way we should look at it. Because you get frustrated when you start looking at names. So, uh, those would be my comments, and I wish there was a way we could do it uh, and get sprinklers in, in rooming houses, but, but it's gonna be complicated. What I would ask you to do, uh, Ron, is I think you're, you're certainly on the right track. And I, I think that the next thing we'd like to see is the contents of that education program, specifics, and how we can assist you in making these things happen. Um, and I would suggest that we have representation at the work session, once you're ready to, to, uh, present that. Representation of all the people that are gonna be involved in the initiation of that process.
Okay.
Does that sound feasible?
Yep, I mean, one of the key elements here is u- utilizing the neighborhood relations team to be a part of this, and you bring that code enforcement neighborhood relations team and then fire together, really tackle this project.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with the pop-ups, uh, especially when the COVID thing's under control, um, the pop-ups can help, and I think that certainly have an April in the west side out there. Uh, and, and other people in their districts when, when the pop-ups happen, that's gonna help us as well. So, thank you, Ron, thank you for your, uh, participation and the team, thank you, Bill, uh, Jimmy, John, thank you. We appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Mr. President, if I might, real quickly, just give you some, uh, a point of view from the, from the National Fire Code. In F P A one, to answer a question that the council had, or their group had, the, uh, rooming houses are required to have fire extinguishers. And they're required to have fire extinguishers, whether or not they're sprinkled, or, you know, it doesn't matter if they have built-in fire protection systems, they are still required to have, uh, according to the code. So just, that's just food to help you moving forward, whenever legislation you might consider, it's already in the code.
Yeah, that makes me feel better, I think it'll make Angela feel better as well.
I want one in every room, Jack.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, are they required to be in every room or just one in the building?
Um, Ms. Jackson, I'm, I'm trying to research that for us, what I've been doing, uh, while you guys have been speaking, and I can't find where it's listed anywhere where it's required to be in each room.
Can you have Eric maybe get back to us with that?
Actually, I'm in contact with, with, uh, Fire Marshal Kramer right now, I'm, I'm, I'm going back and forth with that right now, and I'm trying to see if he can find that for me, if he doesn't, uh, I haven't gotten an answer on that part yet.
Perfect, okay, that's fine.
One of the key factors you would also have, though, if you are gonna require them in every room, if they're not already required, is, though you talk about education programs, Ron was talking about education, you're gonna need to consider some form of, of educating the tenant on how to utilize, you know, properly utilize that extinguisher. It can be sitting there on the wall, if nobody knows how to use it, or if they're not willing to use it, you're not gonna have any luck with it just sitting there, being a, a wall, uh, you know, paperweight, basically, um, uh, uh, here we go. One per every three thousand square feet, uh, of floor area, and within a seventy-five foot travel to an exit pathway.
We gotta work on that.
So, yeah, it's basically just one per floor, which is what I, that's what I thought it was earlier, that it was like one per floor, one per story. Um, but I wa- I couldn't, I couldn't find it, Eric is the code guru, so, um, he just didn't get back to me, so basically, one every floor.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, well, yeah, and, and you could put one between the two rooms, on the outside of the, on the post, in the hallway. And they know exactly, but your, your point about training is very, is very important. You know, what do you do with it, so, uh, that'll, that'll have to be handled anyway. Well, we'll, we're gonna leave that in your hands, Ron, to, uh, to get that all together, uh, but thank you for the presentation, it was excellent. Uh, certainly got everybody thinking based on the comments, and, uh, we'll wait for the next meeting, when you're ready, just, uh, let Kim know, and, uh, we'll get it on the agenda. Okay? Okay, with that, uh, I will adjourn the work session, and, uh, I will, uh, call to order the special meeting, uh, of the city council. Uh, and I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the legislative agenda.
Flip a coin.
I'll give it to, I'll give it to Angela, I heard Angela first, so, um, the second person I heard was April, so I'll give it to April, so we have a motion by Angela and a second by April. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two-six-five-five for the first reading.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mister Boda. Mister Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. Heath, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Institute. For Emergency Medical Services System for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars and approving a budget amendment. To the grant fund to appropriate funds for the uh purchase of pediatric educational equipment. Whereas the Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services has a Maryland EMS for Children Pediatric Educational Equipment Fund. And whereas this funding is designed to provide additional training equipment for initial and continuing education during the current pandemic and for future use. And whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department submitted a grant request M I E M S S for the funding. To assist with the purchase of pediatric educational equipment, and whereas M E. M I E M S S has awarded the city funds in the amount of twelve hundred dollars, and whereas the city must enter into a grant agreement with M I E M S S. Finding how these funds must be expended. And whereas seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires expenditure. Not appropriated or authorized by the city council, whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant. Must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four fifths of the council, the city of Salisbury, now therefore be ordained. By the city council, the city of Salisbury, that Mayor Jacob Oraday is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services System. To accept grant funds in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars and be it. Further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, increase the Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Services System. Revenue account by one thousand two hundred dollars and increase the Salisbury Fire Department medical equipment expense account by one thousand two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mister Tillman. I know we just discussed this in the previous meeting, but just confirm for me, please, uh whether you have any questions or comments, Mister Boda.
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, this is Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Thank you, I'll now call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance number two six five five for the first reading, please signify by saying aye, Mister Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two six five five for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. That concludes the agenda items, uh I will now ask for uh administration and council remarks, Ms. Glance, anything for the good of the order?
Uh thank you all for your feedback tonight, um I'm looking forward into digging into the the hot topic of uh this evening. With you all, um wanted to. Update on a couple of grants that are out there for the community. SWAC has a grant out there that they've gotten through the Maryland Arts Council, it's from five hundred to two thousand dollars for. Artists, organizations and arts-related small businesses, um so that's all at their website, getswac.org, and that's open through almost the end of March, so a fair amount of time for that. Um and then there's another grant, um which is is really critical for childcare relief, um for childcare providers, so there's, I think. A fair amount of funding out there, and that's only open through March third, um and I can email these links out to everybody so we can uh share them. And I would, I would type it in or or ask PAC fourteen to put it on, but this childcare one is really long. Um so we'll get that out on our Facebook and stuff like that for folks to check it out. So that's good news, and I just wanted to highlight that, um even in the this cold nasty weather on Saturday. Uh this community was able to get out a thousand boxes of food along with um coats and jackets and masks and things at our um one-stop shop at East Salisbury Elementary. And we'll have another one in two weeks, so um we keep, we keep marching on.
Thank you, Julie, appreciate it. Uh good of the order, Mister Boda.
Just uh keep uh supporting our small businesses, our our restaurants, uh make sure we're tipping our our waiters and uh. Uh drivers, uh if they're delivering to you, uh I've had a, I think, uh something that we're probably gonna be talking about uh in the next. Month or two, uh about our our, the uh tow truck drivers, uh my first day back in Fruitland, I get people recognize me and I get. Cornered in the store about certain issues and uh so. Anyway, uh so that's probably coming up, and I think maybe it's uh uh something that's a little overdue. And maybe we can create a system where we can have a little bit more flexibility in it uh uh to work with them uh to to some extent, so. Um but we'll we'll have that conversation, I think Andy's researching some stuff, uh just to make sure that everything that we are uh. On par with other municipalities and counties that call uh for tow trucks and stuff, so. Other than that, uh everybody have a good week and uh I'll be, I'm back in town working, so uh I'm I'm close by.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Jackson?
Um, just like to do a Black History fact check. Um of some things that happened on February the sixteenth. Um, Black History, February sixteen, eighteen fifty-seven, Frederick Douglass was elected president of the Freedom Bank and Trust. Um also on February the sixteenth in nineteen twenty-three, Bessie Smith, who was a songstress. Uh made her first recording Downhearted Blues, which sold eight hundred thousand copies for Columbia Records. Then on February the sixteenth nineteen fifty-one, the New York, New York City Council passed a bill prohibiting. Racial discrimination in the city assisted housing developments. Um, Black History, I can tell you, um like I said last Monday, Monday before last or whenever. Three hundred and sixty-five days for me, and I do record a lot of my history, I'm proud of my history, um. And remember, everyone. COVID is not over. Still masked up. Sign up for those shots, I didn't get my last Saturday due to the weather, but I'm ready, I'm geared up now this Saturday, I'm geared up, I'm ready to go. I I'm over my fear, I just want to get it done and over with. Um but still social distance, and I see a lot of people, I've gone around Charlotte, and I've seen some things, and I'm not very pleased with it. People refuse to wear their mask, they refuse to social distance. Um, they get very argumentative when you ask them to back away from you, please give me six feet, it shouldn't be like that. Your safety is just as important to me as my own safety. So please do the necessary things to keep yourself safe and others safe, mask, social distance, sanitize. And if you can, stay home as much as possible, I've been doing it here lately, but um. Just continue to do what you need to do to keep yourself safe, um I'm done.
Thank you, Eric. And Dylan?
Well, the schools are back in session, so you see the big yellow buses, please be careful of the buses, you may not be used to them, everybody, but they're back. You know, when they have their yellow lights on and they're picking students up, do not pass the bus. And also, if you're healthy enough, please, please donate blood, um our region is is very low, it runs low constantly and is always looking for donors.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
Sorry about that, um so our COVID numbers are looking really good, we're under five percent for the first time in. Almost a couple of months, we're doing really good, keep it up, guys, just wear your mask. If you have the opportunity to get the vaccine, please, please get it. They're they're working as hard as they can over at the health department to get everybody vaccinated, just please be patient with them, you know, they're doing as best they can. And they'll they'll get to everybody, I'm hoping, I'm hoping sooner rather than later. If uh another thing is is um. If you look on the Daily Times website, there was a, there's a new in-depth report about the environment on the eastern shore. And that's something that everybody should go read, um it's got a lot of really good information in it and and. What we're looking at in the future that's going to be affecting all of us. So please go check that out, but yeah, uh uh keep wearing your mask, keep social distancing, please, guys are doing great.
Yeah, I was pleased to see that uh yesterday or last night, our number was four point one three, which was actually below the state level. Uh which is really, really good, uh let's just keep keep up the good work. I'd also like to mention that I I have now gone two weeks and a day uh after my second shot. And those people that are fearful, please don't be fearful, because I will tell you, the effect on me from a psychological point of view. I feel like a new person. You know, and and that that is a great feeling, and I wish everybody could have it immediately, and hopefully they will soon. But uh don't be afraid, uh my wife and I both got ours. And uh neither one of us had an iota of a reaction to it, so. With that, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone, wear a mask and have a great week, take care.